Good evening, everyone. I call to order, I'm Denise D. Adams, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Winston-Salem, and it is my honor to call to order this February 20th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and would ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor joins.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Now present.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Mundy?
Present.
Councilmember Cipio?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh?
And Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Thank you very much. Please join the city council and me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please join the city council and me as we do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, through the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our Sergeant-in-charge tonight, Lieutenant John Morris. Thank you for being with us tonight. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. It is the practice of the council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on the consent agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or are submitted in accordance with established procedure. There will be no discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. This meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow morning at 9:30 a.m. and again tomorrow night at 9:00 p.m. Copies of our agendas, as well as our videos of previous meetings, are always available online on the city's website. Just click on the "Watch Meeting" online option. Are there any items, councilmembers, you wish to pull from the consent agenda?
I do. C1, Madam Chair.
I have C1 from Councilmember Clark.
I make a motion to approve the balance.
Second.
Motion has been moved to approve the balance with the first and second. Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember McIntosh, would you please vote? And the motion passes. Would the city clerk please call C1?
Item C1, consideration of items related to the fiscal year 2022/2023 budget ordinances recommended by Finance Committee.
Mr. Tesh?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Councilmember Clark, was there anything specific on the budget amendment?
Yeah. If everyone on the forum that the staff fills out for us on the second page, the third item starts off on March 22nd. It has to do with the sale of the land. I'm having, I'm having a different recollection than what's on this page, and the person I need to consult to is out of town. And Madam Pro Tem, that's the only thing of all these items. If we could hold that, the rest of them I don't have any trouble with. I need to consult the mayor on this one. This has to do with the land on Union Cross.
Okay.
If, if that's possible, I'll make a motion on the balance.
Is it time-sensitive or anything, Mr. Tesh?
This is not time-sensitive. We brought it back because the cash actually hit the bank. We could wait another month. That's perfectly fine.
Okay. So I'll move the balance of, of C1 and hold that in for a month.
May I have a second, please? Do I need a second? Attorney Kontos?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. May we still have a vote? And the motion passes. We will bring that back next month. The council will now consider the general agenda, which is comprised of the following: items related to the issuance of 2/3 bonds, items related to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions, as well as our public comment period. The public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions on matters germane to city government. When the comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes, and the comment period will be limited to a total of 30 minutes. City clerk, can we please have item G1?
Item G1A, consideration of actions regarding the issuance of 8,895,230 general obligation bonds, Series 2023A, recommended by Finance Committee, resolution of the city council of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, making certain statements of fact concerning proposed bond issues.
Ms. Latham, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Adams, members of city council.
Good evening.
This item starts the legal proceedings to issue the 8.895 million in 2/3 bonds. These projects were approved by city council in June of 2021 with the regular budget, and many of these projects are already underway, and we're just ready to issue the debt so that we can make further progress on these items.
Are there any questions or comments from the body? Councilmember Clark, may we have a motion since this comes about through finance?
I will make a motion, and if there's a second, I would like to make a brief comment. I move approval of G1.
And Ms. Latham, are we voting on these separately, A and B?
That's correct, yes.
Second.
Second.
Okay. The attorney?
If, if we could just clarify that, that this first motion is, is on the resolution making certain statements of fact covering the proposed bond issues?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Clark has moved for the motion. Councilmember Cipio seconded. May we have a vote, please?
Oh, I got, I apologize. I'm, I'm new at this. I know. Just for everyone to know, we're actually going to vote on two motions tonight. One is to issue 2/3 bonds, and the other one is to issue additional bonds from our 2018 bond referendum.
That's actually, because that's already been approved by bond orders by city council, that will actually come forward at the March the 6th meeting as part of the resolution to issue the debt.
Okay.
The debt will be issued together, and there will be a resolution on March the 6th for that. But tonight, we do have this, this resolution, and then the city clerk will need to read the bond orders into, into the minutes of the meeting, and after that, you would need to vote to call for a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. So anyway, the, the first item has to do with 2/3 bonds, and we are allowed by law to issue 2/3 of the value of any previous bonds paid off. So you pay off 100, you issue 67. You pay off 67, you issue whatever 2/3 of that is, and you work your way on down. So that's all. Thank you.
Would you please vote? Everybody's voting. Thank you. And the motion passes. Would the city clerk please call G1B?
Prior to reading G1, I'll read into record the bond orders.
Correct.
Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 3,250,000 general obligation street and sidewalk bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 1,760,000 parks and recreation bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 985,000 public safety bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 2,900,000 public facilities improvement bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Item G1B, resolution of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, calling a public hearing on bond orders, directing publication of notices of said public hearing, and filing of a debt statement and statement of disclosure. Public hearing, March 6, 2023, recommended by Finance Committee.
And I will call on Councilmember Clark.
Yes. These are the specific bond orders of the total, whatever it was, 8.9 million we just talked about. I will move approval.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Clark, Councilmember McIntosh. May the city clerk please put up the voting. And the G1 passes unanimously.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. We often, over the course of my years on council, are in a position where we don't have the money, but we have the manpower. This year, we're in a different position. When we have the money, we typically have the manpower but not the money. This year, it's, it's the other way around. So even though we're voting to issue these bonds, we are still backlogged on the amount of work we can accomplish with the staff that we have. We're meeting on the 27th to discuss the pipeline of projects that have been approved over the years, but we, which we have to take a hard look at and see how many of them we can realistically accomplish with the manpower that we have. So I don't want the public to get their hopes up thinking that all this work's going to be accomplished in the next, you know, short period of time. It's, it's going to take a while to work our way through.
Correct. City clerk, would you please read the next item, G2?
Item G2, Mayor joins recommendations for reappointment to the Affordable Housing Coalition. Paul Norby, term expiring February 2026. Donna Woodson, term expiring February 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Councilmember Cipio, Councilmember McIntosh. And G2 passes unanimously. Would you please read the next item?
Item G3, Mayor Pro Tem, Denise D. Adams, recommendation for appointment to the Community Appearance Commission. Brenda Falmore, categorical position. Dr. Brittany Clinton Hill, non-categorical position, both terms expiring February 2026.
Have a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Councilmember Larson, Councilmember Mc, Clark, would you please vote? And the most, the item passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we are moving into the public comment period, but I would surmise that most of us here know why a lot of you are here, and we're glad to see you. But I am going to call on Assistant City Manager Patrice Tony to present some things that have been discussed in the past, I'll say week. Ms. Tony, do you have something for the screen as well, so that the audience can see?
Yes.
What you will be sharing. And then we will begin the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Adams and members of the city council. As stated, there has been a housing situation that has come to the city's attention, and here are some bullet points on how the city plans to move forward with the residents of Willie Davis Drive, which is 1200 Willie Davis, as well as 1635 Cleveland Avenue. These are two apartment complexes that have been in the community for more than 50 years, and has not undergone significant repairs during that time. The city determined that a comprehensive assessment of the buildings need to be conducted to determine the viable options for the building. So in order to perform a full assessment and conduct future rehab of the building, the building was determined that it needed to be vacant or vacated. All the tenants will be provided with at least 90 days to provide alternative housing arrangements. So the city has partnered with Financial Pathways and, and some city staff to make those arrangements. That 90 days period will begin March the 1st. So here are the city commitments. 90-day rent forbearance, and so the city will allow the current residents to keep all of their rent payments that would be owed to the city between March 1st and May 31st of this year. The city commits to paying all moving expenses, and so the city will cover the actual moving expenses, truck, and the labor. The city also commits to paying the rent differential. And so there is a fair market rent, and the city is willing to pay from their, the current rent amount up to 385, and actually, it will exceed higher than that just based on the current rent, the, the current tenants are paying. This will continue for 24 months or until the building has been rehabbed, whichever comes first, with the goal of having the current tenants be able to have first priority to move back into the newly renovated facility. The city will provide a $500 payment for resettlement expenses. So there are just costs with relocation or moving, such as utility transfer fees and other costs, and so the city's committed to paying that. Housing search and counseling services, as I mentioned before, Financial Pathway is on board to assist with housing needs and determining where to relocate people. And then the first option to return, and so current residents will be provided that first opportunity to return back into their apartment once completely renovated. The, the renovations are expected to occur inside and outside these units. The goal would be to renovate above the current minimum housing standard, and the, the renovation would be correlated with the Choice Neighborhoods initiative in terms of the look of the design and the outfit of the unit.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. Public comment, please give your name and address before speaking. Please limit your comments again to three minutes. The first speaker will be Stephen Randall.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Adams. I'm Stephen A. Randall from 4660 Indiana Avenue, a neighborhood formerly known as Lincoln Park, currently is Piney Grove. And the request that I'm making is that, that you guys can understand how dangerous it has become for us as residents, as well as people who pass by. The, excuse me, the, the community or the actual street is, is real dangerous. We're asking for some speed islands or speed bumps or a mixture, but we're asking that something is done because even when in November, October last year, my son was walking down the street, coming from, coming from his job, and there was an accident, and the expedition flipped over. It just so happens that my son decided he wasn't, he doesn't like to walk down the sidewalk like a lot of other those guys in that generation because they know how the traffic pattern is. So we see a lot of young, younger people, and I think, why are they walking on the other side of the street? It's because they already have a fear of getting run down by a vehicle. And as most of us know today, attention, the attention span of the general public is a lot shorter than it was 20, 25 years ago. And, and the attention spans are getting shorter because of those things we have in our hands most of the time called phones. They're devices, and a lot of people are distracted. I walk down the sidewalk. I'm courageous enough to do that. I walk down the sidewalk, and I see people who are just not paying attention. And it's terrible. And there have been accident after accident after accident. So the basic thing that we are asking is that something is done besides a fatality. We're asking something to be done expeditiously, and we're asking to be bumped in front of the line because requests have been made over and over and over and over and over and over and over. And we are almost tired, but I'm not getting tired. This is my first time coming here, so I'm new to. I don't know the formalities. I didn't know we were going to be televised, so excuse my appearance. But what I'm asking is that something is done quickly, quickly. It's about human lives. It's about safety. It's about sanity. It's about-
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Your three minutes are up. But know that there will be a community meeting for Piney Grove in April, traffic calming and some other things. It's already on the books. You'll be hearing about it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Toya Guthrie?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give a story about being homeless in Winston-
Mr. Guthrie, could we have your address, please, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Toya Guthrie. I live at 2730 East Bragg Street in Winston-Salem. Thank you. I'm speaking on the homeless situation, being, being put out of your house. It is devastating. It's, it's heart-wrenching. It, it derails people. It, it messes with the morale. This thing is really running rampant, where landlords are just not even considering. It's not about individual situation. It's just about pay or quit. Pay or get out. Pay or go down there and find you somewhere to live. There's not enough shelters in this city to house all the people that are being displaced, and nobody seems to care that people are being displaced and removed from their premises, and the damage that it does to people, especially people with kids. I came up, I raised four children. Came up, couldn't afford the rent because I'm one of those people who they listed as essential people through the pandemic. So you're only, we're only making a certain amount of money. The rent prices are rising higher and higher so fast that we're, people who don't make $10 an hour, and if you make $10 an hour, not really going to be able to afford anywhere that they can really live. And people need a place to live. People should have somewhere to live. And because they don't, because they lacking certain things that will prohibit them from making better money, they still have to have somewhere to live, and it's unfair that they're not being considered and that it's all about money. So if you don't make enough money, if you miss, if you slip, then you're liable to end up right back where you started, homeless again. And, and these landlords, they're not playing. If you don't pay within a certain amount of time, like your rent due on the 1st, on the 5th, they giving you a pay or quit notice. On the 10th, they filing court costs, which is putting the amount of money that you need further away from you. They're not, there's no relief. There's no, no body to work with you. There's no resources in the community to help people who can't make their bills, you know? And it's something that needs to be considered. I don't know what the solution is. I've been racking my brains. I've been thinking about it. I know that you can't just live in someone's property and not pay. I understand that. But at the same time, there's individual things going on. Thank you, Latham.
Ms. Guthrie, thank you so much. Daniel Rose?
Daniel Rose, 2054 Craig Street. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I'm here to talk about the hypocrisy of the City of Winston-Salem when it comes to our housing agenda. I'm saddened to see that Mayor Joines is not here tonight. I hope he's doing okay. But the commitment that he made last year for 750 units per year of affordable housing has already not been fulfilled, one year in. The commitment to Crystal Towers to repair the building, assist the housing authority, and the financial needs that it needs for repairs has already been broken, 13 months after that promise has been made. Elevators are broken every day. There is a leak in the plumbing today from the sixth floor down that is flooding all the way to the basement. And we're seeing that this city is not really the city of arts and innovation right now. It's the city of broken promises. We're seeing that it's a city of incompetence and hypocrisy. How did you all not know that you own 1200 Willie Davis since 1990s and 1635 Cleveland Avenue? And what's going on with the residents at Cleveland Avenue who've already been forced out of 1635? Are they going to be invited back until May 31st? Are they going to be given the extra two years' worth of support? And what happens after two years? Are you going to expect them to just die? Because there is no housing in Winston-Salem at $420, $450 a month for a one-bedroom in decent quality. There is no reason to put them out, to inspect that property. Code enforcement comes in all the time with residents in place. You can figure out what's going on with the roof, what's going on with the foundation. We've looked at the foundation. It's in great shape. It's a solid brick building. But we accidentally gave the game away here when we said we're going to make it look like the Choice Neighborhoods. This is about gentrification. This is about displacing the people. Like we said back in April of '21, Councilwoman Burke, I ask that you follow through on your commitment of April '21, when you said that reparations should be about action, not just about words. And Councilmember Clark, the only openly Republican member of the council here, you even said, "We're still displacing people in April of '21," right? So what we want to see is that you all take the steps necessary to fulfill your promises for affordable housing. Stop lying to people about why you're moving them out of these apartments. You gave a 30-day notice to, to vacate to one of those families at 1635 North Cleveland. Is that canceled? Have we talked to them? What's going on here? Because it seems like all we really care about is gentrifying the Choice Neighborhoods area. You're going to reduce the number of low-income housing units, increase middle-income housing units, push these people out. What's going on? City of hypocrisy or city of arts and innovation? You make your choice.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Anita Miles.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Adams. City council members, Anita Miles, 494 Smithdale Street. As Comrade Rose just said, I want to show it to you better in dollars and cents. You know what this is? This is the 2022-2023 Winston-Salem budget. The city of Winston-Salem in the last five years has spent over $700,000 in studies and call to action plans for affordable housing. We are 20,000 units short for affordable housing. I pulled the studies, and all of you know me. I'm a researcher. I'm a data collector. I pulled all five. I pull all five. They say the same things repeatedly. There is a shortage of affordable housing. Rehab the current housing that you already have. The city council last year spent $322,000 for the Housing NOLA initiative. I think Councilmember Clark was the only person that said, no, don't do it because it makes no sense. But city council members want to spend city taxpayers' dollars to get more housing when there is no space. Then you ask the residents on Willie Davis to move out and go somewhere. Where do you want them to go? Where do you want them to go? There is no place in this city where you can have an apartment for $350. Where? I'll move tomorrow. There's no place in this city. Do you have humanity? Do you want those people to be homeless? That's what you're looking at. You're forcing them to leave their homes that are in good condition, a solid brick foundation. Where do you want them to go? Do you want them to go out on Union Cross Road? You're buying property out there. Build some affordable housing out on Union Cross Road. Doesn't that make sense? You're building everything else out there. So again, if this city council in the last five years spent $700,000 on studies and a call to action plan, why can't you spend that kind of money on affordable housing? Do I want to be a Republican like Robert Clark? No, I do not. But I expect each and every one of you who are elected officials of this city to stand up for its people because right now you're not. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miles. Cynthia, Cynthia Hurson, is that correct? Your last name. I might be pronouncing it wrong. Hurson. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Cynthia Hurson. I'm a resident of 1,200 Willie Davis Drive. As folks have said, our buildings is sound. It is secure. I don't know where you stand, Barbara Burks, but I'm asking you, are you on our side? Are you for our cause? Because if you ain't, then we have a problem. What they left up off of this plan was that at the end of our letters, it says rehabilitation will be done if finances are in the budget. So basically what you telling me is that if and but saying you're not going to do what you say you're going to do because even if you don't do it, if you put us out of somewhere and you give us your little stamp, you know, $385 for two years, it still make us homeless. And you can see that. I keep telling you, do the math now. I know I'm a little smarter than the fifth grader, so y'all should be too. But this don't make no sense. You really all need to reconsider what y'all doing. We in affordable house. Why take us out? You all, I invite every last one of y'all come to my house. Kanto's been out there. He even was shocked to see the condition of it. It wasn't what y'all said it was, and it isn't what y'all say it's going to be. She did give away the part though, for real. It is what y'all going to do is gentrification. Y'all trying to kick us out. You already see I'm limping and I can't pack no boxes. I got arthritis in both hand. It don't work that way. So you paying for a moving expense, but who going to take down my bills? Who going to do all that? You don't know how much furniture I got up in my house. Why should we have to move out just for you to do a complete assessment? That don't make no sense. Tony White got a good team on his code enforcement. Bring him down there and I bet you there's any code to be found, he will find it. But I bet you'll tell you we ain't got to move out to do it. That's all I got to say. Y'all can stand up and pledge allegiance to a flag, but you can't pledge allegiance to the people that elected y'all in the office. That's wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Hurson. Jessica Rowe? Or is it Row? Jessica Rowe or Jessica Rowe? Row. Rowe? Thank you.
Hello, Jessica Mendez Rowe. My address is 1206 Wedgewood Drive. Good evening, Mayor Protem and the rest of council. I would like to start by saying thank you to the council for y'all's previous commitments to safeguarding and protecting the environmental health of our city. This includes the creation of the Office of Sustainability as well as the Community Sustainability Committee and passing in 2020 a resolution for clean energy and green jobs. The council has shown its full support for addressing environmental issues in our city in the past, and so I thank you for your support and your work. But I'm here today to acknowledge that the city has an important and unique opportunity before it to continue its work towards the safety and health of our community and our environment as the council is discerning who to appoint as our next city manager. A group of local organizations has recently come together to co-author a statement of support for a broad national search for a new city manager. We have expressed a desire for a commitment from this new city manager to environmental sustainability and diversity and equity work. These organizations are as follows. Blue Ridge Chapter of Trial Unlimited, the Climate Justice Team of Parkway United Church of Christ, Beta Verde, Forsyth Autobahn Society, Gateway Nature Preserve, the Institute for dismantling racism, North Carolina Sierra Club Foothills Group, the Piedmont Environmental Alliance, Power Up North Carolina, the North Carolina League of Conservation Voters Foundation, Spatial Justice Studio, and Yadkin River Keeper. Together, this coalition sees that local government has an important role to play in responding to our changing climate, protecting water, air quality, soil, and so much more. Sustainability is essential for a holistic approach to governing. It's about stewarding both our financial and our natural resources so that many generations to come will be able to enjoy this city. The decisions that we make now are affecting the future, and this is increasingly important when it comes to climate and environment. We know that addressing environmental challenges will lead to a more equitable community with cleaner air to breathe, cleaner water to drink, and healthier soil to grow food. Now we need decision makers to implement solutions that we know work. Though the city manager position is not an elected one, we are eager for someone to really see themselves accountable to residents of our community. The person in this position strongly guides the vision and priorities and perspectives of our city workers and council, so we're eager to have someone who has their ear to the ground of the community. Thank you for listening and thank you again for your support. We are really hoping for someone who will strive for a just resilient and environmentally sustainable community.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you.
Hi, Renee Wimbush, 3236 Arlington Drive. First thing I want to say is everyone should know and hear the bedrock of a democracy is hearing from the people that you're serving. Here we get 30 minutes once a month. 10 people in this room. Look at this room. Get to speak tonight. 10 people. Public discourse serves several purposes. I want to know what's going on in my city, not just in my backyard. And if we can't hear it here, where are we going to hear it at? We rely on the papers? And you know what the bedrock of an authoritarian government is? Silencing the people. And that's what's happening with this little bit of time you're giving us. I'm also with Housing Justice Now. I spend a lot of time with the people at Crystal Towers. And everyone here should be ashamed, utterly ashamed of what you're doing to our most vulnerable citizens here. The flood, the elevators, people sleeping down in the lobby because they can't get back up into the room day after day after day is incredulous. And I would like to address also the housing situation on Willie Davis Drive. You have two choices here. The statement was made that y'all were unaware that you own this house. So either A, that's a big fat lie, or B, you confess to the utter incompetence that you didn't know that you owned this house. And then just, and then you want us to believe all of this that you're going to put up here and all these promises you're making when Crystal Towers, 14 months later, I think it is, is still waiting for those promises to be fulfilled? And you expect these residents to trust you to fulfill these promises? This is their home and like Dan said, you know, choice housing, that's what you're trying to do here. And just own it, own up to it. But I really like you to consider what I said at the beginning. How can the people have, how can a democracy not have the public discourse that we should be allowed? We're all here. We're not getting paid. All of y'all are getting paid to be here. We're here because we care about our community.
I may pronounce this wrong. Forgive me. Lovis Zeller? Lovis or Lovis?
Yes, my name is Louis Zeller with Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League. I live in Glendale Springs, North Carolina. Thank you for the opportunity to make these remarks tonight to the mayor and the council. On behalf of Blue Ridge, I'm here to provide you with conclusions and recommendations of our technical report on the Weaver fertilizer plant fire. Our report makes clear that the existing air monitoring network is inadequate for such incidents. Depending on the air monitor location and wind direction, network data could be very misleading and dangerous to the general public. Among our concerns are the high levels of fine particulate matter, PM 2.5, which bypasses the body's defenses and penetrates deep into lung tissue. As a preventive measure, there should be a listing of high-risk facilities in the event of a fire or other accident. Preparation would allow quicker and better evacuation measures for the protection of public health. Depending on meteorological conditions, negative impacts will extend beyond the evacuation zone. Air modeling displaying the cone of unhealthy and hazardous air quality conditions and the estimate of how far it extends beyond the incident should be completed and made public. Consider that during a forest wildfire, EPA recommends the Air Now Fire and Smoke Map, a project of EPA and U.S. Forest Service, which enables agents to add data from low-cost air sensors. There should be an equivalent method for critical industrial air quality incidents like the Weaver fire, a way to incorporate air quality data from industrial incidents into the EPA Air Now map. Surely we must prevent, must provide, surely we must provide better protection for people than for trees. Today, I'm providing the council with the hard copy of the report, Winston-Salem Weaver Fertilizer Fire, Analysis of Publicly Disseminated Air Quality Information, which may also be downloaded from the URL, which is on my written remarks here. Thank you for the opportunity to make a statement to you tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Zeller. If you would give that to Ms. Tony, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jen Brown at 2160 Burke Meadows. I just want to ask everyone out here, how many of you are renters? Raise your hand if you're a renter. How many of you are renters? Are you going to take someone in your Porsche, John, to look for an apartment at 8:30 a month, what you're offering the Willie Davis folks? How about you, Kevin? You're a man of the people. You've been protesting since many of us are in diapers, right? Are you planning to take these residents to find a place? How much are you paying Financial Pathways, James? The same as we paid ESR, $100,000 to barely cover what they, people lost during the Weaver The amount of hypocrisy sitting here by elected officials that are supposed to represent the people. I promise that not a damn one of you will take these folks around, will actually talk to any one of these folks from Willie Davis, from Cleveland Avenue, from Crystal Towers, period. Because all of you get to go home in your cars, collect your paycheck, act like you are doing something for the city. Because I have seen it in every single one of you. And I was going to yield my time tonight. And I've decided I'm done. And many of us are deciding the same because the fact that each one of you sit in these seats that we put you there and not a damn one of you care about renters in this city. James, you can, you can make your face if you want. I don't see you saying anything otherwise. And until we see something otherwise, all of you better watch out for November because we will replace you. Not you, you're already done.
Good evening, Madam Protem and distinguished council members. Philip Carter, 955 Man's Island Place Apartment, E., was in Salem. You know, I admire a man when he has integrity, when he speaks the truth, whether it's liked or not. And that man happens to be you, Robert. You demand it hour. Because you always speaks the truth. It may not be favorable, but it's the truth. And I'm reminded of April 21st, 2021, when we were in these, when we weren't in these rooms, but it was Zoom. And the discussion was reparations. You might remember. And I watched how the black council persons bemoaned and lay minute the destruction of revitalization, how devastating it was to the displacement, the eradication of black communities and black businesses. And then Robert said, you know, I don't think we need to demonize these people who did something that they may have done ignorantly or haphazardly or not even intentionally when we're doing the very same thing right now. He even alluded to how in the Cleveland Project area, you all cheered about the 30 million choice grant, knowing that a thousand or more people would be displaced. And then Robert said something that was spectacular. He said how Councilwoman Adams had an issue in her community in the Boston Thurmond neighborhood, and the residents were afraid. And she went in and championed their cause to bring about some type of resolve that they might could live with. And that's when I applauded her. And I thank you for telling us and reminding us of that. So the question becomes today, Councilwoman Burke, are you going to champion your constituency cause or are you going to dampen it? Now I've heard from Assistant Manager Tony. And here's where the deception come in. All of what you shown up there, you didn't show the part about if the funds are available. See, that's what we get into the deceptionness, the political posturing. You understand? We say all these things, but we leave a way out hoping that the citizenry is too ignorant to see it. So I know what's going on. We got about 80 parcels of land between 14th Street and 25th Street, 80. And you've all decided that we like to sell land to our preferred developers. So what you do is you kick these people out under some pretense, sell that land, then begin to move right on up 25th Street with all the other 80 parcels you have and sell that too. Now I can understand the need to increase the city coffers tax base, but it's time that the taxpayers' money return to them, that it benefit them. And most of all, that if there's going to be some demonization, let's look at those who's doing it today.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matthew Mayers. I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane. I'm here to echo the comments that Ms. Rowe made about looking for a new city manager who will champion environmental sustainability and environmental justice. That will lift everyone's boat. I'm also here to thank Members Cipio and Larson. I watched the recording of the Public Safety Committee meeting last week, and you had an exchange with Mr. Geis that helped to clarify quite a bit some of the obstacles to getting more electric vehicles in the fleet. And so I do want to express my thanks to all of you for the sustainability resolution that you passed over two years ago that Ms. Rowe also mentioned. But a little reality check, in that resolution, among other things, you called for 50% decarbonization of fleets and buildings owned by the city. I read on the city website that the fleet is about 1,700 vehicles. Means by the 2030, you need half of those to be electric. 850 electric vehicles in the next seven years and 10 months. That's over 100 vehicles a year. over 100 vehicles a year. So far this year, it's this many. There's, I think, five hybrids in the, in the queue now. It's better than nothing. So how do you get there? We're probably not going to get there, let's be honest. But can we get a little closer? Can we do that by, is it possible to ask Fleet Services to look a little further out into the future when they're deciding on what the purchase needs are? Not just so that we can get into lines for electric vehicles, but also so that we can be thinking ahead about charging infrastructure that will be needed, so that we don't have that as an excuse later on? We can't get these vehicles because we have nowhere to plug them in? Well, think about it now, or sooner than now. And also, is it possible to start thinking about ways of acquiring vehicles outside of what we can consider the normal channels? I know that the city is limited in, I don't know what you call the system. I guess it's probably GSA contracts or something like that. Are there other avenues? Does everything have to be bought that way? I know there are other citizens out there in the world buying these vehicles. They're getting them somewhere. Sounds like a lot of extra work to me for some of the people in the city staff, and I appreciate that there's a shortage of people. You might need help. Reach out. You have my address now. So I thank you for the time. I'll probably see you again next month with some more ideas. And let's think further and further ahead, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Vander Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Adams and City Council members. My name is Vonda Thomas.
I apologize.
And I live at 4673 Indiana Avenue in the Piney Grove community. I am a member of the community and a member of the Piney Grove League for Change. I am here because of three things: the Weaver plant fire, the traffic situation, and what is the future for Piney Grove. First, I'd like to thank the city council for all you have done for the Piney Grove community concerning the Weaver plant fire and surrounding communities. However, we still have concerns. First of all, I'd like to say our community has not heard from our representative. We thank you, Councilman Taylor, for taking the time to meet with us. We know that your schedule is busy. Again, we have not heard from our community, our city council representative. The Piney Grove community would like to know why we have not had the opportunity to meet with our city council representative. And when will we meet with you? Next subject, Didi Adams. The traffic. Can you imagine waking up at 1 o'clock in the morning to find a car sitting on top of your car? Your fence has been knocked down, the fence that you just had repaired because there was a wreck on your street. There have been so many lives lost, cars destroyed, fences knocked down, individuals unable to go up their handicap ramp because there's no warning sign on the 4600 block of Indiana Avenue to let the speeders, to let the drunk drivers, or whoever know that there's a curve. There have been deaths. Homeowners insurance going up because we pay for it out of our pockets every time we have devastation. So I ask you today, when will our city representative meet with the Piney Grove community? It doesn't take 13 months. I ask you, what are you going to do about the traffic situation so that we don't find cars on top of our cars? And what's the future for Piney Grove?
Thank you. Joanne Allen?
Joanne Allen, PL Box 284-27102. I think everyone have pretty much said it all. We've been saying this for many years. I think one person said it especially correctly, and I'm sorry, good evening, everyone, said it especially when they said, you just don't care. Either you just don't care, or you don't know any better. You've been doing things the same way, year after year after year. I've been coming up here ever since 2013. I've been telling everyone, everything that you see in this city has been a plan by design, the economic betrayal and corruption of Winston-Salem. And when you all come and sit in these seats, you become part of it. And the way you become part of it is because you go along with it. Mr. Robert Clark, you've been around a very long time. You know exactly what I'm talking about. We had a conversation. I know you hadn't put any money in your pocket, but I'm here to tell you, everybody else have gotten kind of cozy and pretty wealthy sitting up here, okay? And all I can say is this, we aren't through. We are not through. We're coming, but we're not coming by ourselves because we're tired. The people are tired, all the smiles and the smirks that you make up here. All you really had to do was do your job. Your job is not for you to sit there and say, oh, I know that's what you want, but this is what we're, what we want and how we want to do it, especially for Wake Forest University. Understand, let's not leave them out. I'm not talking about the students. They haven't done anything. I'm talking about a group of men and women who have gotten together years ago to say, hey, we need to make Winston-Salem our city. And the way we do that, let's look at all of these houses over here, how, oh my gosh, these black people that's living here, the melanated people, we want that. See, you're not telling the public the truth. You're not telling them how everybody's buying up property now alone with their friends as to what's really going on in this city. And the fact that you all have the audacity to sit there in that seats, in each one of these seats, and go along and get along, that's where I draw the, that's where I draw the line. And we're going to keep coming, but we're not coming by ourselves this time, because now it's past the point of doing what's right. This is just straight up corruption, period. And as soon as the public understand that, you all will soon see exactly what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Public hearing comment has come to a close, but for public service announcement, next Monday, we have the Committee of the Hold. It will be at the Convention Center. Mr. Garrity, when is the Committee of the Hold?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Adams, members of the City Council. It's next Monday at 4 o'clock, I believe it. So in this...
Where is it?
It's got, it's here. It's here in this chamber.
Okay, it's here in this chamber. And as they were saying earlier, it'll be about capital projects. Housing is the focus. So Mr. Rose and others, I hope you'll be there. It'll be about public safety. It'll be a pre-up to the budget so that you'll have a chance to hear and see what we're discussing. Again, the Committee of the Hold, for those that don't know, is when we're allowed to talk to each other in, like this, per the law. The law doesn't allow us to meet outside of committee meetings. We can't have a majority. If there are three of us on a committee, four, two can't be there. So this gives us an opportunity to talk about what's coming in the budget and, again, our prioritization of what we're going to do about housing, what we're going to do about the taxes, how are we going to pay for all of the things that everybody expects government to pay for or assist with, when Winston-Salem, as you've heard, has the lowest taxes for a city our size. I know that my council is saying that she's commenting, and she shouldn't, but I just want you to know that, again, as those of you that have volunteered to help bring solutions, this council, I know I have, I've worked with Mr. Rose and others on evictions and ERAP, when the money came down and we couldn't get it out. And they know that. We work with people. So for everybody to think, and we, trust me, we, we signed up for this. We don't take it personal. We don't take it personal. But I can tell you this, I know I'm not getting rich, and you can check my tax returns and everything else. I worked for 38 and a half years in manufacturing. That's what I did. I was lucky enough to be in a teenster environment for 38 and a half years. But, as we said, the world has changed. It started changing in '08 with a recession. It changed again in '10, '11, another recession. And then here comes COVID. Again, we want to work with everybody. We want to try to figure, I do, I want to try to figure this out together. But this city has to make some tough decisions going forward. And if our priority is housing, y'all got to be in it with us on housing. If it's going to get investments in East Winston, y'all got to be with us on that. Everybody might not be with that. But y'all, just like you showing up now, you need to keep showing up, as Ms. Allen and Mr. Carter and others have said. With that being said, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.